Almost, not yet. Not yet. It'll thirty seconds or so.
We're on the stream.
What's that?
It's streaming.
Okay. We're definitely live? No hiccups, no?
This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. This meeting of June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four was published in the Courier-News and Star Ledger and placed on the borough's website. Notice of this meeting was also placed on the bulletin board at Borough Hall. A copy of this notice is available to the public, and a copy of this statement shall be included in the minutes of this meeting. Mayor Brian Gallagher.
Here.
Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Here.
Glenn Dennehy.
Here.
Tom Mitchell.
Here.
Randy Pitts.
Here.
Gina Stravick.
Here.
Roger Verum.
Here. Please stand for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, two items up for discussion. The first is I've asked Somerville Fire Chief Joe Stitley to come to council and kind of give us an overview, come on up Joe, of the tragic fire that happened on June fourth. It was a fire that, the likes of which we haven't seen in a long time, thank God. But I think through the actions of Chief Stitley and the Somerville Fire Department, they took what could have been a horrible, horrible tragedy and kept it to an awful, awful incident. So Chief, if you can, just kind of give us an overview of what transpired.
So on June fourth, twenty twenty-four, approximately fourteen oh three hours, the Somerville Fire Department and Somerville Rescue Squad were dispatched to Six West Main Street for the reported fire in the basement as they received it from a caller inside the building. When fire units arrived on location, they were met with smoke on the first floor as well as heavy smoke and fire in the basement. Thank you to the Somerville Police Department, they were able to safely evacuate all the residents of Two and Six West Main Street safely without any injuries. The fire department made an aggressive interior fire attack into the basement, and due to changing circumstances in the building and deteriorating conditions, the decision was made to pull them out for the safety of all fire ground personnel. This eventually, the first floor had a partial collapse into the basement as well as the second and third floor, and this eventually turned into a four alarm fire, bringing in roughly seventeen fire department agencies, which included seventeen fire engines, five ladder trucks, three rescue companies, and approximately one hundred and twenty fire personnel. This also brought in five EMS agencies, multiple police department agencies to help with traffic control and roadblocks, as well as county OEM and county hazmat. This fire is still under investigation in conjunction with the Somerville Fire Official's Office, Somerville Police Department and Prosecutor's Office due to the nature of the damage in the buildings at this time. There was a total of five businesses that have been disrupted, as well as eighteen apartments that had all residents in those at the time.
Eighteen residents?
Eighteen apartments with residents in them at the time.
Okay, alright. Good?
I'm good.
Alright, so obviously, this was a well-coordinated response. I don't think this is anything that people planned for, but I think through the training that people up and down the line had, the most important thing was every resident got out safely and every first responder went home that night safely, or over the course of the next day or so. What could have been, again, a very horrible tragedy through the efforts of our professionals, whether those are paid professionals or volunteer professionals, they coordinated. You know, having probably upwards of a hundred and fifty people on the fire ground at that time?
Easy, yes.
Yeah, easy. You had Somerville PD, who was first on the scene, who did an absolutely fantastic job getting those residents out. The response of Somerville Fire, the response of the Somerville Rescue Squad, First Aid and Rescue Squad, OEM, again, local and county OEM. Unbelievable job in what you did. And I will have folks back again, because I do want to recognize a number of folks in this process. But I also want to recognize, you know, one organization in particular that stepped up during the course of the event. You know, everybody looks at the fire, but they don't see what's going on behind the scenes. And behind the scenes, you had multiple families, multiple residents, some of whom are here tonight, who were affected very directly by this fire. Their homes, their possessions. And it's incumbent upon us, more from a social responsibility standpoint, we took those folks that didn't have any place to go, and we actually brought them here into this room. And then we found them temporary lodging. I will tell you that the Somerville Civic League, the ladies of the Somerville Civic League stepped up and did an incredible job. They stayed with these folks morning, noon, and night, and ensured that these folks were cared for, were fed, were brought to the county to obviously get paperwork and get things rolling so that they could find alternate shelter. And they did that for about five or six days. And they do it because they want to, not because they have to. It's because they care, and that's the value of living in this community. We're not a big community, we're two and a half square miles, but we are awesome. And when people are in need, that's when this town shines its best. You know, you look along the back, you've got our officers. Chief is here representing all of the men and women of the Somerville Fire Department. We did have some firefighters go to the hospital that night. One of our officers went to the hospital that night. This effort was just incredible, so I want to thank each and every one. There's also a couple of folks that I do want to, in particular, reach out. I will tell you, Governor Murphy was on the phone with me at eleven o'clock that night, while I was on the fire ground. And I was on the phone with him multiple times over the next two days. And the governor's outreach, his first question was, "What do you need?" And what we did need, obviously, Main Street is a state highway, and we didn't have the staffing to shut down the road at either end, in conjunction with DOT. So I said, "Governor, what we need are troopers to shut the road down, so our officers can maintain working in the borough, not only at the fire scene, but, you know, the regular day-to-day." And I will tell you, within about four minutes, I had a call from Colonel Callahan from the State Police. And he said, "Where do you need them? What do you need?" I let him know, and he said, "They'll be there in about twenty minutes." And those troopers were there in about twenty minutes. Governor called me the next day and said, "What do you need?" And I said, "I need you to keep Main Street closed until we can actually secure this scene and ensure that the buildings are not in imminent danger of collapse." And he goes, "You got it." And then the Colonel said, "You got it." So I had Tom Kane's office reached out to see how they could help. I had Chanel Robinson, County Commissioner, reach out. It was just this wonderful connection of people, both on the fire scene and then those asking how we can help. Mayor Kara from Raritan called, a number of folks called, and just a big thank you. Obviously, I think council shares our gratitude to everybody, all of our first responders, as well as the Civic League ladies. I see a few ladies in the back. Raise your hands, ladies of the Civic League. You know, and I think what that points out is, you know, the job of the first responders is done, but the job of the borough is not, and their ability to step in and help fill a gap. I also want to thank Mr. Sluka, who literally worked morning, noon, and night on this. It was just an unbelievable feat. You know, I was on the phone with him at midnight some nights, and then again at five-thirty in the morning, the following morning, checking on the folks that were relocated to a hotel, a local hotel, and phone calls, and just, it was just a massive effort, and he's going on a very well-deserved vacation very soon. So thank you, Kevin, as well. But again, Chief, job well done. Please pass our thanks along to all of the men and women of the department. And it was a great stop, too, because, you know, when you have buildings that join each other, there's always that danger that it could spread very quickly. And your team did an absolutely fantastic job, obviously in coordination with a lot of other agencies as well. So job well done. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a touch note. Just one quick note about the Civic League as well. While they were helping those residents that were displaced, they were also providing food, water, and coffee to all first responders on scene throughout a twenty-four hour period.
Yeah, awesome. Great job. Thank you. So now, we have Marco the Therapy Dog. So I think Marco has become an icon in Somerville. He's known throughout town, whether it's kids or seniors, Marco has just become this wonderful, warm greeter for Somerville. And just very briefly, I'm going to turn it over to the, where's the chief? Where'd he go? Oh, there he is. He's hiding. So I got a call one day from the chief, and he said, you know, "There's a concept that Officer Di Biassi put forth, which is for a therapy dog." And he said, "We're going to send you a package about, you know, how this, what it is and how it would operate." So I read through it, and in a heartbeat, I said, "Absolutely, I think it's a great idea." So Chief, I'll turn it over to you for a minute.
Well, I'm only going to talk briefly about this because I would like Nicole to talk about it. But she did come to me with a package of laid out with information about getting a dog, and I think she was afraid of what I was going to say. But she went to the two lieutenants first and prepped them, and they were sitting one morning saying to me, "Oh, Nicole's got to talk, Nicole's got to talk." What the heck's going on? So anyway, she put together a wonderful package, and obviously, she did her homework because everything is working wonderfully. The dog is great, these folks that raise these dogs, temperament is beautiful. There's a lot of training to do. She, I don't want to steal her thunder, but she has put together with the DSA and business owners, and I'm sure the Civics leading too has helped, fundraisers for the dog to help. So overall, this is a wonderful project, but are you comfortable speaking a little bit?
So I put this program together, I did a bunch of research, just recognizing the stress that all of our officers face on a day-to-day basis, and the community members. We're getting a lot of calls for mental health, like, to me, an increasing amount of calls. So it's really important, I think, to have something like him who could reduce maybe stress or lessen some of our anxieties for us and for the community members. And I mean, I think it works. I've gotten, you know, people, "Hey, thanks for making my day. Where's Marco? I need Marco time." So I know he's doing his job, and we're here for the right reasons. So thank you for everybody who made this happen. Yeah, it's a lot of training, so it's a lot of dedication, but I think it'll, it's worth it.
Awesome. So typically, now, just so folks know, Marco is not a police dog, a canine police dog, per se. He's a therapy dog.
He's a therapy dog, but we go through a whole round of training. It's through the American Kennel Society, and it's pretty vigorous, which I didn't know it was going to be this in-depth, but it's a lot of work. We go through twenty sessions, and then I have to work on after each session, two weeks. And then, so it's a lot. It's a full-time job. When we're at work, we're trying to do some training, and when we're at home, I'm doing training pretty much full-time at home. And with my family, when they're all, they're all wearing their shirts. If it wasn't for all their support, too, I don't know that I could have done it, but,
And does he get the scraps in the squad room? Let these guys know that. So I actually have a, I spoke with Nicole, and Randy, if you welcome down.
So I have a badge for Marco. Now, I don't quite know how to swear in a puppy, but I think this is great. He's a welcome addition to Somerville and the Somerville Police Department and the force, and more importantly, to our community. Randy, you want to?
Love what Officer Nikki's done. Well-loved by the community.
Alright, so now, we get to put the badge. Eric, let's do this. I think we all might need help getting up into this. You ready? Here we go. You are now, maybe unofficial. There we go. Look at that. Woo! That is awesome. So if you see Marco out and about downtown, anywhere in town, I think it's hard not to see him. He's all over social media, he's just become a wonderful icon for Somerville and for the Somerville Police Department. So, awesome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good work.
Alright, so now, as much enthusiasm as I have for the, our therapy dog, I have even more enthusiasm for the officers of the Somerville Police Department. And it's a wonderful night tonight, because we have three officers, three longtime officers who are being elevated. They're being promoted to different positions. And I think it's wonderful to see their colleagues out here to support them. And I think these are well-deserved promotions. With the retirement of Manny Garcia, it's creating a domino effect of positions needed. So the first one is Resolution Number One Eighty-three, approving the promotion of Lieutenant Bertoli to captain. Do we have a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verum.
Yes.
Okay, we'll now have the oath of office to Anthony Bertoli.
I state your name.
I, Anthony Bertoli.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of New Jersey.
And the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of police captain.
All the duties of police captain.
For the borough of Somerville.
For the borough of Somerville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thanks for your good work.
Congratulations, Captain.
Okay, Resolution Number One Eighty-four is approving the promotion of Sergeant Giallardi to lieutenant. Do we have a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verum.
Yes.
And we'll now have the oath of office for Christopher Giallardi.
I state your name.
I, Christopher Giallardi.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of New Jersey.
And the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of police lieutenant.
All the duties of police lieutenant.
For the borough of Somerville.
For the borough of Somerville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thanks for your good work.
Okay, next is a Resolution One Eighty-five, approving the promotion of Officer Obazinski to sergeant. Do we have a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verum.
Yes.
Okay, we will now present the oath of office to George Obazinski.
I state your name.
I, George Obazinski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of New Jersey.
And the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of police lieutenant.
All the duties of police sergeant.
I'm sorry. For the borough of Somerville.
For the borough of Somerville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
Help me God.
Congratulations.
Thanks for your good work.
So before I turn it over to the chief to say a few words, it's always gratifying to see the families come with these officers. These officers choose a career that, you know, it's a tough career, you know, bringing home some of the things that they hear and they see. The commitment they make as officers is a commitment that their family makes. And I think it's very important that they share these moments, these great moments, with their families. So I think it's wonderful that your families are here, your kids are here. It's just, it's a good thing. So thank you, thank you, all of you officers, for doing what you do every day. You make our community absolutely awesome, so thank you all. Chief?
Alright, want to thank all you guys for showing up. It's a good thing. Thank you to the council for allowing this to happen. This isn't additions, this is replacements for the captain leaving, Captain Garcia. We really don't want to see him leave, but he's moving on with life, so we wish him the best, too, because he's been a reliable, dedicated employee who has embraced this town. He came from North Jersey, and this now for him is actually home, which I'm sure he would tell you. And we do find it with all the officers, I'm sure it happens in every police department, but with that said, it just seems like everybody comes here, they fall in love with the town, and it becomes their town. So, real quick, soon to be Captain Bertoli, almost twenty-five years on the job, he's come up through the ranks, he worked at Transit first, and I don't remember where else, but he's been with us for close to twenty years. He's been in every unit. He, it should be a very smooth transition to take over for Captain Garcia. These guys all know what's expected of them, and they're very good at what they do. Lieutenant Giallardi, he was in the detective bureau for a long time, he's been on task force, narcotics task force. He actually has a law degree. Not that that changed anything, but another reliable, dependable hardcore police officer who wants to help people and get stuff done. Another, he'll step into Lieutenant Bertoli's place, and, you know, it should be a smooth transition. Soon to be Sergeant Obazinski, he's been here twenty-three.
Twenty-three as a police officer.
Okay, as a police officer. You know, he's been in patrol, he has done something that's a great benefit to town, he's been involved with traffic safety in our department for several years now. And to have that as a sergeant now is a giant help to us, too, whether he's going to keep working on accident reports. But again, a lot of experience, problem solver, and he's good for the town, he's good for the department, and I want to thank you guys again.
So I think you've assembled a very smart, dedicated, really good force. I've been around this for twenty-five years now, and this is probably one of the best forces I've seen, both administratively and streetwise. It's, they understand Somerville. That's really what it's about. You just said it before, they're problem solvers.
And they understand people, they talk to people, they communicate, and they solve problems, fix things all day.
That's great, awesome. Officers, thank you so much for all you do every single day. And the three ones that are receiving promotions, congratulations. Enjoy it. Thank you. You don't have to stay, you can leave. We'll take a one-minute recess while everybody exits.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Even though we're in recess, we're still live. Even though we're in recess, we're still live. Good? All right, folks, uh, we're going to continue on. Uh, can I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of June three, two thousand and twenty-four?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, departmental reports and notices are as listed, uh, committee reports. Let's start with Tom, please.
Okay, Mayor. Uh, let me see here. The Fourth Annual Juneteenth Celebration will be held on the Somerset County Historic Courthouse Green from four-thirty to six-thirty on this coming Wednesday, June nineteenth. Davy Lynn Jones Evans, a fifth-grade teacher at Vandevere Elementary School, won the Somerset County Historic Preservation and History Award for excellence in preserving local history. Her project, At Home With History, used her collection of public works to educate her class and other readers about Somerville's historic black community. Somerville resident Art Adair will receive the Juneteenth Leadership Award for his work in preserving the stories of the eighteen U.S. colored troops from the Civil War who are buried in the Somerville New Cemetery. This is one of the largest groups of such graves in the state of New Jersey. And finally, county surrogate Tina Jallow will report on her efforts to uncover the records of enslaved residents of the county stored in county archives. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Tom. Glenn.
All right, so the Environmental Commission, we met last Tuesday. Uh, we have a number of things going on. We, uh, we're continuing to foster all sorts of different partnerships. Uh, one with the Wallace House, trying to hopefully help them with, uh, Colonial Garden and some other projects as they get grant money for it. Uh, also, we continue our connection with the Somerville High School Environmental Club. Uh, they received a twenty-thousand-dollar grant for climate change education and, uh, creating a rain garden there at the high school. Uh, we also wanted to thank DPW for continuing to fill all the water bags for all the newly planted trees. Uh, and then we are also continuing work on our very own grants for trying to get some street, more street trees planted and continue our energy efficiency programs. I think I mentioned it last time, but the J. Scott Memorial Garden did indeed receive the fifteen-hundred-dollar grant, and they are working on getting some new garden beds there as well. Uh, please come out, uh, we will be meeting here Tuesday, July ninth, at, uh, seven P.M.
Great, thank you. Thank Gina.
So, the Somerville Rescue Squad, uh, responded to a hundred and fourteen calls last month, uh, seven hundred and twenty-five volunteer hours. And I think you'd be pleased to know that there's, uh, a three-minute and six, well, not three-minute sixty, three-point-six-minute response time, which I think is really impressive and important, uh, if you have an emergency. Uh, so that's Somerville Rescue Squad. Um, the, uh, Board of Health had no meeting, so I have no report for the Board of Health, but I would, uh, say consider everything you hear in the media about the, um, heat wave coming. Um, be safe, be cool. And lastly, I'd like to report that I, um, just, uh, came from the, uh, Somerville High School Hall of Fame Golf Tournament. Um, and, um, I, I think it's a tribute to our community to have such fine athletes and, uh, the Hall of Fame Carry On traditions of, of Somerville athletes. So, um, so I was pleased to participate, um, and be with those, those fine people, and, um, I actually won the longest drive for the women, so.
All right, excellent, good, nice, that's great, thank you. Teresa.
Uh, the Municipal Alliance and Youth Services Commission, uh, did not meet this month, but we are looking forward to having a table at National Night Out in July, uh, where we will have volunteers there handing out information about what the commission does, um, how we help to fight addiction in our community for all ages. Uh, the Somerville Public Library has several, uh, nice programs coming up this week and next week. Uh, tomorrow, Tuesday, June eighteenth, uh, English Conversation Group will be meeting at ten-thirty for people learning English. At four-thirty, uh, read to a therapy dog in the children's room will be happening. Uh, Friday, June twenty-first, Baby Storytime at ten-thirty A.M. Wednesday, June twenty-sixth, the notary hours, uh, will start at ten-thirty, so if you need something notarized, you can take it to the public library and they will do it for you. Uh, Thursday, June twenty-seventh, um, there's a craft program to make fabric bowls in the program room, and the Teen Leadership Committee will be meeting at six P.M. that evening in the Young Adult Room. Uh, and you can stop in the children's room to learn about the Summer Reading Challenge, which goes from June tenth to August seventeenth. Um, and you can register for the programs that happen at the library every week by going online to S C L S N J dot org, and, or you could download the app, and that will show you all the events that happen throughout the month.
Great, thank you. Randy.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to introduce and bring up our, the DSA's new superstar executive director, Olivia Manning.
You can sit if you want, that, yeah. If you, you, that's, you know what, that's great, you talk with your hands, I get it.
More dynamic, there we go.
I get it.
Uh, I don't shy away from a microphone. Um, hello, my name's Olivia Manning, no relation to the chief, who's no longer here. Uh, we already have a joke about that, which is really funny. Um, I come from Bergensville, which is fifteen minutes up to eighty-seven, um, where I did pretty much this exact work. Um, I founded our Main Street Program, I applied when the program came back to life in New Jersey, because some of you may or may not know, the Main Street Program kind of went away for a little while and came back. So when it came back, we applied, we got it for a shot, and we've been sort of working on that up until this point. So now I'm really excited to grow and do so much more here in Somerville. Uh, we always come here, uh, to do all the fun things. Uh, we frequented with our Back to the Future Time Machine at cruise nights, if you've seen it, that's my husband and I, just for fun, um, and a lot of other things. So I'm really excited about working with Somerville and hopefully connecting with a lot of you and, and what we'll be able to do moving forward, I'm sure you'll see a lot of me, um, and various projects and things that we hope to do. A lot of people ask me, you know, what's your vision? And I can't really answer that, because this type of work is not about the director's vision or the board's vision, it's about the community. And the more engagement we can have with the community and getting their responses to various things and making sure we're listening, uh, is really where the vision's going to come alive. So that's what's important to me the most, is that we figure that part out as best as we can, uh, build on a lot of amazing history that's already existed, obviously it's not a new program. Um, so I'm really excited to bring that in as well. So, um, looking forward to connecting with everybody, and if there's anything I'm missing, Randy, let me know. I, I am happy to report that even in the two weeks that I have been here, we've already been able to save a little bit of money and a couple of little things. Um, so we're, we're starting, we, we hit the ground running, and, and we're moving forward. So, looking forward to connecting with you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else, Randy?
That's all.
All right, Roger.
Uh, certainly. So this past Friday, not only was it Flag Day, uh, but we, Somerville hosted the two thousand and twenty-four naturalization ceremony. Uh, it was scheduled to be on the steps, but obviously, uh, weather had a different, uh, idea in mind. So we had it in the commissioner's room, commissioner's conference room in, in the county building. Twenty-two individuals took their oath of allegiance, so we have twenty-two new U.S. citizens, uh, that were sworn in, uh, on that evening. It was a, a really awesome event. If you haven't had the opportunity to go, very excited. The, uh, the folks that were being sworn in that night were thrilled to be there, and you could tell how, just how happy they were to be able to say the oath, and, uh, you know, they, they were singing along to the Star Spangled Banner, they were singing along to God Bless America, um, they were absolutely thrilled to be joining, uh, our country as citizens. Uh, so, next year, obviously, we will do it all over again. I want to thank Kevin and, and his hard work for, for putting the program together, as well as, uh, the staff at the New Jersey Central Field Office, uh, Borough Hall Staff and Somerset County, uh, for, again, putting on just a tremendous, tremendous evening.
Great.
Roger, were all these twenty-two people from Somerville or the county?
Uh, so, they're from all over. Uh, so it's, it is the county. Uh, there were, I can tell you, there were.
There are twelve different countries.
Yeah, twelve different countries, we can, it's Argentina, Brazil, Canada, Colombia, Dominican Republic, El Salvador, Haiti, India, South Korea, Mexico, Pakistan, and Peru. Were represented as our, as our, uh, former citizens of those countries and new citizens of ours.
And, and this is something that Somerville puts together. Uh, this isn't the county, or the state, or the feds putting it together. This started, I think, about eight years ago, Kevin?
Oh, yeah, probably about that time.
Yeah, about eight years ago. Um, uh, Kevin and I had a discussion, and, 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 you know, we, we tried to tie it around Flag Day, and, uh, we made some outreach to, uh, uh, to the, to the federal government. And of course, their initial reaction is, oh, you can't do that, we've got to do it in a federal courthouse, we've got to do it in a federal building. But after some persistence, we, uh, we managed to sway them. And, uh, it's become a, a standard each year. And it really is something to see. These are folks who worked very hard, uh, to become United States citizens. And, uh, the pride in their faces, uh, their ability to wave a flag, um, and, and they're just so proud of themselves and their newfound country. It's absolutely incredible to see, it really is. Um, and, and I would encourage next year, if anybody can, to, to go. It really is just a wonderful, wonderful experience, not only for them, but those that, that actually go and witness this. Um, you know, they're, they're proud new citizens, and that's a really, really cool thing. Um, I don't have any committee reports, but I do want to thank, uh, a, a big part of the town for reaching out to me to, uh, to express their condolences on the passing of my father. Um, the outreach of care and concern, uh, was, uh, was very warm and greatly appreciated, so thank you. Uh, at this point, uh, I will ask for a motion to open the meeting to the public.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravic.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record, and please address your comments to me. Public portion is now open. Hearing none, we'll close the public session, and I will ask for a motion to close the public session.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravic.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Okay, consent resolutions, we have one typo on two oh one. It should actually, uh, it, it's not the, uh, requesting, uh, a contract with Lexipol to update policies and procedures, it's actually the renewal agreement with the statewide joint, joint insurance fund. Uh, it's a slight typo. Are there any others that anybody would like to have pulled off?
One ninety-five, please.
Two oh three.
Okay. Uh, one eighty-six, approving annual renewal of taxi driver licenses for twenty-four, twenty-five. One eighty-seven, approving renewal of taxi owner licenses for twenty-four, twenty-five. One eighty-eight is approving annual renew of wrecker and towing licenses for twenty-four, twenty-five. One eighty-nine is accepting a grant authorizing the clerk to execute a agreement and all related documents from the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs for local recreational improvement grant in the amount of seventy-five thousand. One ninety is approving Chapter one fifty-nine for state of New Jersey Local Recreation Improvement Grant. One ninety-one is approving Chapter one fifty-nine for the Department of Homeland Security Federal Fiscal Year Twenty-two of Emergency Management Performance Grant and Emergency Management Agency Assistance. One ninety-two is approving Chapter one fifty-nine for state of New Jersey Clean Communities Grant. One ninety-three is authorizing the award of affair and open, uh, contract to T and M Associates for storm sewer engineer. One ninety-four, authorizing the refund of escrow balance in the amount of two thousand two hundred forty-five dollars to Fatos Amadi for one twenty-one South Bridge Street, Block sixty, Lot four. One ninety-six is authorizing submission of a grant application to statewide joint insurance fund for assistance for a contract with Lexipol to update police policies and procedures. One ninety-seven is approving alcoholic beverage licenses to be submitted to the Division of Alcoholic Beverages for twenty-four, twenty-five. One ninety-eight is approving annual renewal of amusement and video game licenses for twenty-four, twenty-five. One ninety-nine's approval to submit a grant application and execute a grant contract with New Jersey Department of Transportation, twenty-five state aid grant improvement, uh, road improvement program including South Midow Street and a portion of Washington Place. Two hundred, approving the New Jersey Triumph Association to utilize parking spaces in front of the courthouse on August sixteenth, five P.M. to nine P.M. for cruise night. Uh, one, uh, sorry, two oh one is authorizing the, uh, renewal agreement to, with the statewide joint insurance fund. Two oh two is approving the assignment of a contract with LMR Disposal to Casella Major Account Services, LLC, as a result of the acquisition of LMR Disposal. Uh, do we have a motion?
So moves.
Second.
Roll call.
Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravic.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
All right, uh, one ninety-five is authorizing a municipal lien on Block seventy-eight, Lot three-point-oh-two, commonly known as one seventy-four Grove Street, for notice of violation and order to terminate. Uh, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Yeah, I was, I was wondering, uh, I noticed that that lot is, is in the, uh, the back half of that lot is in a flood zone. It's, uh, the house is not, but the back, back yard is almost entirely within the flood zone. I don't know if that's, uh, pertinent to the, uh, the purpose of this.
To the lien?
Uh, no, it's not, this is a lien on the property as a result of, of a, a court determination. Um, i- if you recall, that property went through a series of appeals. The property owner lost those appeals, and, and, uh, their cost assigned to it that, that the municipality's attaching a lien. It has no reference to floodplain or any of that nature.
And this has wound its way through the court system, and the court has authorized this?
Um, yes, we're, we're at the point where, where, where we're legally authorized to do this.
Okay. All right. Roll call.
Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravic.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
All right, two oh three is authorizing a payment of the five-hundred-dollar application fee for a grant from the Hazardous Discharge Site Remediation Fund to the New Jersey Economic Development Authority for the remediation of Block one twenty-seven, Lot one, known as the former color technology property located at sixty Cornell Boulevard. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Uh, my question is regarding this grant, what, what is it for, what is it going to cover, and, um, what are the conditions that we have existing?
All right, I'm going to ask Colin to speak to that, he spoke to that, uh, in executive prior to, uh, to this coming to the table.
Pardon me. It's commonly known as a, a remedial investigation grant. It's to finally identify all the contaminants in the ground, take the building down, do groundwater testing, and ultimately, um, come up with a plan for submission to the D E P for remediation of the site.
So, so we have the grant, or we're applying for the grant, the fee is for application?
The grant has been approved, but with the E D A, you have to pay an application fee, so this is part of the, um,
The back, the backwards state process.
Or the approval process, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravic.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Okay, bills and vouchers.
I make a motion, uh, to pay bills and vouchers in the amount of seven hundred and forty-four thousand, two hundred, six dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.